Mr. Albro.
President.
Ms. Calderon.
Here.
Mr. DeCosta.
Ms. Coffinger.
Here.
Mr. Lombardi.
Mr. Alunum.
Here.
Ms. Ryan.
Vice President Dunn.
Here.
President Gomez.
Here.
I'm standing for the meeting. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The board's statement. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, the New Milford Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof at the Redford Milford Public Library, Milford Borough Hall, and the main office of all Milford public schools. The board announces that under its long-standing policy, it will not discuss in public any comments made by members of the public concerning individual staff members. At this time, please be advised that all telephones and electronic devices are being turned off. Meetings of the board are open to the public, and all members of the community shall feel free to participate. Before coming to the board, the chain of command should be followed. There are two portions of the meeting reserved for comments from the public, the first at the beginning of the meeting for agenda items only, and the second at the end of the meeting for other items. Issues raised by the public may or may not be responded to by the board, but all comments will be considered. The board requests that all members of the public be mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Due to confidentiality and legal rights afforded by the state of New Jersey, members of the public are asked to not speak negatively or in a derogatory manner about any employee of the board or any student. Committee of the whole. I seek a motion to approve minutes for February 20th work, February 20th closure, February 21st regular, and February 21st close. I seek a second. The call done. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I don't think so.
For all of them?
No, for the president.
Sorry, I couldn't hear anyone.
They were there for the last meeting.
Okay.
I have to say to the February 28th.
Okay. Okay. Student board representative report. Mackenzie.
Hello, everyone. I hope everyone's having a nice March so far. So I'm happy to report that our student council is busy planning for our spring spirit week. We're working on creating fun themes for every day, and one of our favorites is famous duo day. Some examples of famous duos could be SpongeBob and Patrick, or Batman and Robin, so students can think of friends and their favorite duo just that fast. The full list of spirit of spirit days will be announced very shortly. We're also working hard on coming up with awesome games and activities for our annual Spring Olympics. We're saying to keep working on Spring Olympics as the end of the year gets closer and closer. And in other great news, tickets are officially on sale for the spring musicals Beauty and the Beast at N M H S Musicals dot com. Students can get tickets for just $10, and adult tickets $20, so be sure to get tickets for our waving show. Thank you, guys, and I hope everyone has a great rest of March.
Thank you. Any questions from Mackenzie? Comments? Okay, thank you. You know, you don't have to stay out of Europe, see? Thank you. Bye. Okay, presentation, our annual district audit for 2022-2023 year. Gary, you can see.
No. Who's on here?
You have the auditor chair with all the old slides.
Okay.
So this is the district auditor for this year presenting the 2022-2023 audit.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. As Stephanie mentioned, we have completed the 2022 pre-audit. And just to give you a brief overview financially, the district continues to improve with your year-end reserves and surplus. At the end of June '23, the district actually had about $11.8 million in reserves and surplus. Half of that is tied up in capital reserve and maintenance reserve. So at the end of June, you actually had about $4.7 million in capital reserve. Now, of that, almost $1 million was used during the '23-'24 school year, the current year budget. So you still have over $3.7 million available for '24-'25, as well as other projects that you may be undertaking between now and the end of June. So well below the maximum you're allowed to have. I think your maximum is maybe $50, $60 million, so you're obviously well below. Maintenance reserve is about $650,000, and the emergency reserve was just over $400,000. Your unassigned surplus was $1.6 million. It did decrease from last, the prior year, 2.2, and the main reason behind that, for the two years during the pandemic, the Department of Ed actually allowed districts to maintain a higher unassigned surplus, which was equivalent to about 4% of your expenditures. That was a two-year window. Prior to that, you were only able to have 2% of expenditures left you. And this year, for this audit, you had to go back down to 2%. So that level was driven only because of the formula that the Department of Ed mandated. But again, as I mentioned, I think financially, the district is continuing to be in excellent condition. Actually, the surplus was about 1.8, and reserve was 1.8 greater than the prior year. We had, I think, six quarterly recommendations that were included as in the management report. A couple of them are repeats, and what we plan on doing next week actually is having somebody here to work with Stephanie and her department, just so those items can be addressed and corrected prior to the end of the school year. Nothing significant, matter of just adjusting some of the bank reconciliations, reporting of the food service account. None of the recommendations are material. We did have some compliance matters that we did meet and discuss at length with the business office. So a couple of those, again, we will try to address next week. Couple dealt with grant reporting. Grant accounting and compliance matters are very important. As you have employees funded by grants, certain record keeping has to be maintained on file, as well as the appropriations have to match the various grant awards. And they, those grants do get modified, so we will make sure that the grant allotments is actually what's in recorded in budget reports. If there are questions from the board, I'd be happy to entertain any questions on whether it's the O F recommendations or the financial condition.
Any of these recommendations, they have any financial impact on, you know, on the budget or anything in the district? Meaning like that there was something that was overseen that?
No, nothing that would be material. The bank reconciliation adjustments are relatively minor, so they will not have any type of impact on budget development at all.
If I could, a lot of the bank recs that, that's been a repeat for, I think, four years now. It goes back to the 1920 school year, and there were various different people in place and various bank accounts, and so transfers, and so that's where we have money that we shouldn't. So it's just a matter of cleaning it up, but this has sort of been a long thing. It's gotten better, it's just not clear. So that's why they're going to come next week and help us just go through that, because we can't, we could do it, but then we're not doing like our day-to-day. So it's a lot just for really Kate and I to do ourselves, so we appreciate the help that we're going to get. And then the one recommendation, if I can, and Gary knows it's coming. And actually, there's a resolution on the agenda tonight as a result of it, because I always thought that once the board approved participation in a co-op or a state contract, that it sort of allowed us to spend above the bid threshold. And since I do have the Q P A certification, that's $44,000. So we recently purchased air conditioners for Berkeley in excess of it, but it was done under the Ed Data purchasing. And so because you've already approved that twice, once in June and once in January, I thought that's suffice. It no longer does. And so going forward on a lot of agendas, you'll see purchase orders with full detail, because it's a little gift to the auditor that they'll have lots of minutes to review. And hopefully that'll clear that recommendation.
Yeah, if you don't mind reading them.
Yeah, so we did, we're already correcting our mistakes and have it only done tonight. That's Gary.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay. I seek a motion to go into closed. It is hereby moved that the Board of Education adjourned to executive session in accordance with the provisions of Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 P L, for the purpose of discussion and consideration of matters pertaining to the following subject: personnel. The minutes of the executive session will be made available to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. I seek motion. Stephanie, seconded by Joe Lunum. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So we're going to come back to open, but we just need to, should we go? Should we let them stay?
Yeah.
Fine, we'll go in the other.
And then when you come out, can you just get a motion to go out of closed?
Yeah. No, we're not going either. Yeah, it's just the board.
Okay.
No.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to start with the status of recent budget developments. We have finalized our preliminary budget, but unfortunately are once again facing a reduction in state aid. This marks the second consecutive year of cuts in our state aid funding. Despite these challenges, our top priority remains the well-being of our students and the integrity of our educational programming. To safeguard these priorities, we have reevaluated our budgetary allocations. As a result, I am pleased to announce that despite the loss in state aid, we have managed to avoid any reduction in staff. Our commitment to maintaining the quality of education and support for our students remains unwavering. I commend Dr. Khuchar for her diligence in budget planning and fiscal responsibility, ensuring resources are strategically allocated and aligned with district goals and priorities. Her dedication has been instrumental in maintaining the financial health and stability of our district. So thank you, Khuchar, for your ongoing collaboration in this process. I would like to add my sincere gratitude to all of those who contributed to the success of the second session of ELAM Free Parent Academy, which centered around mathematics education, including members of our faculty on tonight's agenda, and also including Ms. Paula Castro and Ms. Ginley for their thoughtful planning of this presentation.
Thank you.
This marks the second consecutive year of cuts in our state aid funding. Despite these challenges, our top priority remains the well-being of our students and the integrity of our educational programming. To safeguard these priorities, we have reevaluated our budgetary allocations. As a result, I am pleased to announce that despite the loss in state aid, we have managed to avoid any reduction in staff. Our commitment to maintaining the quality of education and support for our students remains unwavering. I commend Dr. Khuchar for her diligence in budget planning and fiscal responsibility, ensuring resources are strategically allocated and aligned with district goals and priorities. Her dedication has been instrumental in maintaining the financial health and stability of our district. So thank you, Khuchar, for your ongoing collaboration in this process. I would like to add my sincere gratitude to all of those who contributed to the success of the second session of Elementary Parent Academy, which centered around mathematics education, including members of our faculty on tonight's agenda, and also including Ms. Paula Castro and Ms. Ginley for their thoughtful planning of this presentation. It was well attended. We provided childcare and dinner to families, and it was a really nice turnout. So thank you all for your efforts. I'm excited to announce that our next and final session of the Elementary Parent Academy will spotlight social-emotional, or SEL, and wellness, social-emotional learning and wellness. This topic will take center stage on April 17th at 6:00 PM at Berkeley Street School. Please mark your calendars and save the date. I'd like to extend a heartfelt thank you to the New Milford Education Foundation for their unwavering support. Your dedication and commitment to enhancing educational opportunities for our students are deeply appreciated. I'm pleased to share that we're seeking approval this evening from the board for the donation of items listed on the agenda. These items represent important resources that will positively impact the learning experiences of our students. I would also like to thank the New Milford Wrestling Foundation, New Milford Recreation Department, and ShopRave for their generous donation of wrestling mats for the high school. Your support will enhance the athletic experience of our students and contribute to the success of our wrestling program. Profile of a graduate. We had another presentation last evening. I wanted to take a moment and follow up on that presentation. So I was made aware that the link for the virtual meeting was not functioning properly for many of those who tried or attempted to join. Please accept my sincerest apologies for any frustration that that might have caused. To ensure that everyone has an opportunity to fully participate and engage in this process, we have two additional presentations this week, including tomorrow's presentation, Wednesday, March 20th at 10:00 AM, and Thursday evening, March 21st at 7:00 PM. These sessions will provide valuable insights into our vision for our students' future success and the qualities that we aim to instill in them as they progress through our school district. We are genuinely interested in gaining as much feedback as we can and input from the public and the community, and look forward to your presence at one of these upcoming meetings. Reminders will be shared prior to each presentation. Those will include links for your attendance. Okay, on to some good news. It's been a busy month in, I would say, all of our schools and districts of the hall. Elementary. So March has been and continues to be a fun-filled month of learning for all at our elementary schools. On March 8th, Berkeley and Gibbs hosted their annual Read Across America event, which was a great success. Thank you to all of our distinguished guest readers and members of our Board of Education who were able to join us and share their love of reading on this special day. On March 14th, elementary schools celebrated Pi Day. Many of our students dressed and joined in the celebration, dressing as Albert Einstein, to celebrate this special event. Throughout the day, students enjoyed working on many different math activities and playing math games. March mathness is in full effect and is well underway with different classes making the leader work each week. On March 14th, Gibbs also celebrated their kids' heart challenge, jump rope for heart day. Students jumped rope in groups of five within their respective grade levels. It was a heart-healthy, fun day for all. Earlier in the month, Gibbs welcomed the author Jason Patterson to their school. He spoke to all students about the graphic novel Process, aligning with our professional development in the writing workshop, and also shared how he creates and further develops the characters in his stories. Author Jason Patterson signed copies of the book for our students. Special thanks to the Gibbs PTO for sponsoring this great event. On March 17th, students and staff at Berkeley competed to see which class would earn the most points by wearing green. As you might imagine, there were many leprechauns and fairies at school that day. The day ended spectacularly with an upset to their usual champion. A mysterious ending there. It's balsam. This week, Berkeley welcomed back science explorers. This is one of those programs that we have talked about, I think, a few times at previous board meetings. That is Title I grant-funded. Students and teachers took part in an assembly yesterday and will be conducting with great enthusiasm and joy hands-on science experiments aligned to our curriculum all week. This grant-funded opportunity continues to provide our students outstanding science learning opportunity in a fun and interactive way. We're very excited that our eighth graders at David E. Owens Middle School recently volunteered at the local Applebee's, raising funds for end-of-year celebrations. The recent DEO production of Shrek Jr. was amazing. I actually had the pleasure of attending. It was big. An outstanding performance. Many thanks to Ms. Haderthauer and her team who facilitated the event, giving our students an unforgettable experience. And when I was watching them perform, I can see them in a few years in their roles on the high school stage. Incredible. Rising Sixth Grade Parent Night was a great success with upwards of 80 families in attendance. All attendees appeared appreciative to initiate a relationship of growth as their students transition into the middle years of education. Congratulations to Eli Nivar for finishing second place in the Bergen County Spelling Bay. Students from all over Bergen County participate in this spelling bay. The DEOMS school community is very proud of Eli's efforts and accomplishments. Kudos to you, Eli. Congratulations to our New Milford High School February Students of the Month: Joseph Macario, grade 12; Ryan Moore, grade 11; Moses Deuce, grade 10; and Bradley DiAmore, grade 9. Today was the first presentation of New Milford High School's Safety Ambassadors Program. Safety ambassadors offered interventions and skits on how to be safe at parks and in the home to our second-grade students at both Berkeley and Gibbs. New Milford was chosen to participate in this program through the Robert Johnson University Hospital. Special thanks to Mrs. Zachar for coordinating this program and offering students this opportunity. New Milford High School recently celebrated their first member show to honor our art center community, including students, members, affiliates, faculty, volunteers, staff, and board at the Art Center of Northern New Jersey. Special thanks to Mrs. Fenizia for all of her efforts. Congratulations to the following students for their participation in the 2024 High School Sales Challenge at the Russ Berry Institute for Professional Sales at William Patterson University: Alexandra Vermeria; Mateo Suric; Christian DiOroseo. Special thanks to Mrs. Taylor for making this all possible. Kudos to the Related Arts Department for all of the wonderful recent events at New Milford High School. Their calendar has been jam-packed. These events include FD Bowl's fundraiser, Spring Musical, Alumni fundraiser, the annual benefit concert, and related arts craft fair. A very special shout-out to all members of our recent set build. The musical would not be possible without your contributions and ongoing support. We're very fortunate to have such an involved and generous community and staff to support our efforts to impact the lives of our students. There's also a lot happening in athletics. The Winter Team has produced several great accomplishments. Congratulations to Coach Groff on leading the boys' basketball team to its first league championship since 2014 and for being named League Coach of the Year. Congratulations, Coach Groff. The cheerleading team secured its third state championship in four years. Devon Ryan secured a medal for the second consecutive year in state wrestling. Fibiana Ajin Tumobi qualified for the State Meet of Champions in girls' track. Twenty-seven honorees received recognition in the all-league county and state levels. Jaden Kenwella achieved the NJIC High Team Series in bowling. And we'd also like to extend another thank you to the New Milford Education Foundation for the new scoreboard, which will be in the main gym. We also have many upcoming dates coming up, so please mark your calendars. Project Unify will host Bandit School on March 27th at 10:00 AM in the high school main gym. If you have an opportunity, these are very well-attended games and feel-good experiences for all attendants. One of our favorite games for us. Our annual Pediatric Cancer Softball Classic will take place on Saturday, April 20th at David E. Owens Middle School. Our baseball team will be playing at Boulder Stadium on April 23rd at 7:00 PM. Our second annual recreation senior softball and baseball night will be scheduled in May. Dates TBD. The Athletic Dinner will take place on June 3rd at Mattolusos in Hawthorne beginning at 6:00 PM. The annual golf outing will take place on June 24th. Location TBD. And finally, Coach Allison Doherty will be honored at the Century Club luncheon on May 19th for the BCWCA Service Recognition Award. Congratulations, Coach Doherty. From the Office of Dr. Pro and Special Services, the next two weeks are very exciting for the Department of Special Services. On Thursday, March 21st, we recognize Down Syndrome Awareness Day, and everyone is encouraged to wear crazy socks. The following week, we will acknowledge autism acceptance. Daily announcements will be made in each school building, and everyone is encouraged to wear blue on Thursday, March 28th. Our middle and high school students and Wings Academy clients created pins to sell to raise acceptance and awareness. Overall, we sold 180 pins throughout the district. Preschool classes had a fun Chilly Day playing soccer and working on skills. The PTO arranged for soccer shots to come and work with the preschoolers recently. Finally, the following staff members received a special education shout-out to recognize all that they do for our students with unique learning needs. Valerie Failey, Berkeley Instructional Assistant; Deborah Herbst, who is a faculty member at David E. Owens Middle School; and Maureen Westervelt, who is a faculty member at Wings Academy. Thank you all for your commitment and dedication to our students. SAT testing on March 9th was successful, marking the first time the SATs were administered digitally. Additionally, the NJGPA testing for all 11th graders took place last week and was also successful. And students use Chromebooks for testing administration. Finally, as we approach spring recess, I want to extend warm wishes to our whole school community, to our students, faculty, staff, and parents. I hope you all enjoy a restful spring break filled with lots of fun. We will be closed beginning Friday, March 29th through Friday, April 5th, and we'll come together once again on Monday, April 8th. Enjoy. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Any questions or comments? Okay. Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Teaching.
So it was three pages, and I said one and a half page here and one and a half page there, and then went overall. I do not have an additional report this evening.
Oh, great. Okay, thank you. Business and media reports, Stephanie Khuchar.
Good evening. I have very brief. Just some agenda items. F-23-24.202 through F-23-24.206 is all related to the preliminary budget that will be submitted to the county office tomorrow. I just want to, I don't know if the board is aware, but when I first came to the district, there was zero money in capital reserve, and you've now since deposited over $4 million. If we do get the high school roof and Gibbs roof, as well as the high school HVAC, the withdrawal of capital reserve that's going into the 24-25 budget is $3,523,010, which is significant. But I'm confident in the work that you guys have been doing, that you'll be able to replenish that quickly. And I do think that that's good work because, long-term, we're sealing our facilities, and we're not going to be chasing leaks. It's also part of the long-range facility plan and on the list of projects that the district has to do. And we are getting funding through the ROD grants to offset the other portion. The entire project is a little over $5 million. The other budget item, the other agenda item is F-23-24.111, oh no, 211, which is the approval of Tom Toneyan, and that's a renewal for the food services contract they've been doing, our food services. And so that is just so they can continue to do our food service operation for the 24-25 school year. And then F-23-24.213 is the resolution that I was referring to when Gary was doing his audit. And so that you can expect to see several of those moving forward, resolutions that look like that. And that concludes my report.
Any questions? Okay, any needs on board community reports?
I want to answer every one.
No, it's fine. Go ahead.
I should have two things. I actually met. We did get a significant presentation from Dr. Khuchar and Lauren Daxler, and really a good explanation of the things that we have in the budget, the things that we needed to cut, things that we didn't need to cut, and really the financial health of the district. One of the things being that transportation costs have been affected by the fact that we've been able to hire additional bus drivers. So kudos to everybody in the administration for getting that done. And then the other thing is just an NJSBA note. Just wanted to point out that Maya Brothers was honored as an unsung hero at the NJSBA Unsung Heroes Gala. I was able to go last year. Wasly honored by Maria Prediger, and I know it was a fantastic event. And from all things that I've heard about Maya, she was a fantastic basketball player. I probably can still beat her. I'm not gonna, you know, a fantastic athlete. So congratulations to her. And really, my understanding is just an exemplary person and a great representative of the district.
Thank you. Nicole?
Yeah, I just want to just review. Ms. O'Daxler actually took a lot of my thunder coming through all the winter.
No, it's fine. It's fine. You gave me the excuse.
So in the winter recaps, we met with Mr. Rigadelli last night. So the board, I sent this, shared this with everybody last night, just to outline what we discussed. Just a couple other things. I think we're going to try to honor the winter athletes. We're just trying to set a date for that. We're just trying to plan a live date, find out which meeting would work best. The other thing that Mr. Rigadelli mentioned was the TK Classic, which was going to literally be April 6th, and that's sort of baseball, there's 30 teams throughout the county. And the money collected through that is donated back to graduating seniors as scholarships across Bergen County. Also, just because it's on the agenda under F-23-24.199 regarding the flag football, just to give the board an update, if you didn't get a chance to read my notes, Mr. Rigadelli went with a couple of the girls on Nega Day, and they received a check for $2,000 from the Jets. So that offset the cost for flag football, and currently there's anywhere from 28 to 29 girls signed up. He doesn't have this, he wasn't 100% sure about when the first date is, but they'll see it during the evening, just as he said possibly April 15th. But they'll be in the evening to coordinate everyone's schedules. And, if anybody has any questions regarding what's on the note, they can reach out.
Okay. Anyone else? Any correspondence?
None this evening.
Okay. I seek a motion to open to the public for items on the agenda. As outlined in the Bill of Education, Bylaw 0167, each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes. Need a second? Cheryl Cameron, all in favor?
All in.
Opposed? Any comments from the public regarding the agenda? I seek a motion to close to Toni Second by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, board action. I seek a motion for VA-23-24.37, .73, .74, .75. Need a second? Stephanie Kaufenzer, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Educational programs and curriculum committee, Stephanie Kaufenzer?
Well, thanks for the following. I make a motion to seek approval for C-23-24. I made a motion to seek approval for C-23-24.182 and .3 in this case.
In a second? Nicole Dunn, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Personnel recommendations. Having the recommendation of the superintendent, I seek a motion for P-23-24.46, .69, .84, .87, .91, .93, .93. Twice. Point 102.
No, it's a rescinding or addition.
Yeah, of the same one.
Yeah, but one of them is being revised, and the other one is being rescinded.
Yeah. Point 102, .103, .104, .105, .106, .107, .108, .109, .110, .111, .112, .113, .114, .115. Need a second? Joel Luna, roll call?
Mr. Albro?
Yes.
Mr. Albro?
Yes.
Ms. Coughinger?
Yes.
Mr. Luna?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yep.
Vice President Dunn?
Yes.
President Gobert?
Yes.
Financing Facilities Committee, Cheryl?
All right, before I start, I just wanted to point out a couple things on the agenda. For F-23-24.186, that's awesome. Is that approved? The wrestling mats to help base card. Again, thank you to the New Milford Education Foundation for their endless donations to school. We couldn't do a lot of things that we do without them. Something close to my heart is flag football for girls. Also, .199. And then, 202 obviously the budget, so there's a lot of things. Oh, and of course, .208 is the approval to accept the donation of wrestling mats from the New Milford Wrestling Foundation and the Rex Department of ShopRite. So, those are some great items on the agenda. So, I seek a motion to approve F-23-24.175, .176, .177, .178, .179, .180, .181, .182, .183, .184, .185, .186, .187, .188, .189, .190, .191, .192, .193, .194, .195, .196, .197, .198, .199, .200, .201, .202, .203, .204, .205, .206, .207, .208, .209, .210, .211, .212.
Need a second? Toni Albro, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Any old business? Joe?
Show a quick question regarding the last meeting with the whole thing with historic seminary or less seminary. Did we go and follow up with that and reset an application or find out what was missing or what happened?
I know I was looking into it. I'm trying to gather, like, to find out the last communication that was made. I did have contact with Teddy Grant on the council. I hope we'll be reaching back out once I have a little bit more information. So, we're working on that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Toni?
Just a comment. Ms. O'Dawson had mentioned about the performing arts. I was able to attend the alumni night last Friday. The middle school performed, the high school performed magnificently. Mr. Preep was magnificent, his performance as well. What really struck me, we had nine or eight or nine alumni, and going back at least 10 years. And each one was very emphatic in, you know, being honored to be there, being thrilled to be there, once the light was shined upon them. It was like we went back 10 years. And their performances were great as role models to our kids because each person was completely professional. And I think our kids in the audience were absolutely amazed by them. I know my daughter sees herself as being one of them. But the fact they took their time out to throw themselves out there and do that for the benefit of our children was amazing. So, I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any new business? Paige?
I don't understand, but it's just a question. So, in the past, because we always have Mackenzie here, but in the past, right between the other, the middle school and the elementary schools came, and they gave their presentation, or their student council, or their student board, or whatever, they had done that. So, I was just wondering if we might, it might be a little too late in the year. I don't know if they can pull it together, but I know that that would have discovered.
Yeah, it's always, it's always in favor by many to have our students present. It's something that I had talked about, even highlighting our programming of K-12. It's great, it's important to get our kids up here. Dr. Kuchar and I have been looking at the remaining four dates. And I know that there may be some shifts in the calendar. Yeah, that was actually, that we're. So, once everything is finalized, we can certainly look to do that.
Anyone else? Okay. Open to the public. I seek a motion as outlined in the New Milford Board of Education Bylaw 0167, each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes. Need a second? Stephanie Coughinger, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Any comments from the public? No? I know. Matt, do you want to say anything?
Yeah, just pretty clean. Good to see everyone. Good to see everybody again. It's great to see everybody. Just for anyone who wasn't aware, I have a compliment to municipal lines. Many of the members are here. Ms. Coughinger, Mr. Luna, Ms. Ryan, doing another fantastic job in organizing and presenting another Black Moon Day to remember those who lost through addiction. It's a powerful program, and it makes a difference, and it makes a great impact on our community. So, thank you for the work that all of you do. We also, this year, the second year in a row, about a week ago, had our second annual Crescent Moonlighting in recognition of Ramana, which was also very well-attended and a very nice program as well. And I personally would like to thank the board and the district for the invitation to read to our students, Read Across America, to honor Dr. Tousay. Thank you. It was a great time.
Thank you.
It was a lot of fun. So, thank you.
They loved it.
Yeah, well, so did I. I think I enjoyed it, even more than my daughter. So, but thank everybody.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, I seek a motion to close to the public. Paige Ryan, seconded by Stephanie Coughinger, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, any board member request for additional information? Okay, I seek a motion to close. Seconded by Paige Ryan, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, next meeting is Tuesday, April 23rd. Oh, I thought we, oh.
That was for real.
Okay, so, we are going into close. Sorry, let me read that. I see a motion. I see a motion to go into close. Seconded by Paige Ryan, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?